All right. Good afternoon. We're here for the work session agenda. January 2nd, 2:45. We're going to do the Commissioner roundtable discussion first. I guess before we do that, I kind of want to give you guys a heads up that I'd like to have the meeting start consistently. And we're talking about about 1:30 in the afternoon. I think that will at least help me and I think members of the public and maybe our department heads and others plan a little bit better on when to tune in. And we may regularly have some time between the end of our work session and the beginning of the regular session, but maybe commissioners can go mingle in the building or catch up on other county business work or even go walk their dogs. So just we're gonna probably implement that at the next meeting and moving forward. The board appointments, I've talked to each of you about the various boards that we serve on. And I think for this coming year, we're going to make just a few changes. And what I would ask, though, I think it's good for us and for these boards and for the public for us to have turnover maybe every couple of years. And so maybe next year, we have us jumping off some of the ones that we've been on for a while. I don't think we should switch up every board every year. I think we need more continuity than that. But I would ask us to think about getting on different boards and getting off ones maybe we've been on for a while. Dave, I know Parks is one that you're really good at and enjoy. That's one that I think I at least and maybe some others might want to be on at some point in the future. So not to pick that one out in particular, but I think that's just an example. And Dallas was talking to me about library and, you know, so I think we'll at least have more discussions moving forward. Anything else on board appointments?
I'll probably go ahead and turn over the board for WCCA to you. They have a board meeting coming up.
Great. Appreciate that. Dallas?
I just had a question. So recently, I've seen one board at least make a recommendation of who they wanted on their board. And then a recent one of who they wanted, what commissioner they wanted on their board. It only occurs to me that should that be the case, that they can control who gets on their board and who the commissioner is that's on their liaison. I just felt like that takes makes them so autonomous. They why do they need us at all?
Mr. Chairman, since it's my board that did that without me asking, we were just kind of talking, talking about change of leadership, possible change of boards, and they took it upon themselves to do that. I agree with Dallas that the boards may should have some influence, maybe some, you know, let us know who they want if they want to, if they so choose. But it should be up to us who sits on what board.
And I agree with that too, Dallas.
And I think he's doing a good job on his board. I'm not referring to to anything negative in that respect. I just felt like, why would because I know the airport board did that. They made their recommendations of who they wanted and all of that. And I'm not too sure that's the best policy for the county because in my humble opinion, the county is a little backwards and things don't change very quickly. And we need, we really do need some new young people to be doing things in this county. And I'm happy, Peter, that you're the chairman because you're the youngest guy on the board.
Diversity.
Yes.
Well, Dallas, if I can interrupt, I think we're in agreement that what these folks send in isn't controlling, that it's maybe just a data point. I think that sometimes we might put some weight on it and other times we might disregard it. But I think that I, I don't think we need them to do that. And I wouldn't ask them to do that either on my behalf or anybody else's or as a regular practice. But anyway, I know it has happened a few times. And I guess if they want to do that, they can. But we can also choose to ignore it if we want to do that. Anything else on board appointments? So Michelle, I'll get with you and we'll finalize the list to publish here today or tomorrow. I think at this point, before continuing Commissioner Thomas roundtable, we ought to give our guest Kermit a chance to visit about, or if you want to visit. But I mean, we should deal with it. So Mr. Willie can head out, get on with his day. Jim, do you want to give us maybe just a second or two of where we stand?
Basically, we so we as the select, Dave North, myself, Kermit, we gave you all a recommendation letter that was was very well stated and lined out all the facts of the last question that we had of the three contenders and for that selection process with our recommendation of 57, 40 in favor for the 57 million going to Peaks and then the 40 going over to PFM. And then, and that was the treasurer's recommendation as well. The we, the email was forwarded to everybody with that question with their with their answers. Y'all had time to review that. You've had, the boards had time to review the letter of recommendation from the selection committee as well. We are at that point that we now need to make a selection or decide what we're going to do with those funds that are sitting in for Standard State at this time. The date where we will no longer be collecting any interest off those funds is the 5th.
Great. Mr. Willie?
So as, as a part of the fund selection committee, I was just asked to kind of consolidate our thoughts and what we had all come up with. I sent you all the, our letter of recommendation. It is, it was a unanimous decision between the members on the committee and also with the county treasurer weighed in on that as well and is proposing this same thing. I tried to answer the questions that Dallas had had regarding safety and liquidity. One of the things that the Peaks investment, then Peaks is the one that we recommend putting the 57 in. They have a, an investment vehicle called the YO class. And that is a, it's a liquid fund that is for Wyoming municipalities and other governmental agencies. There's currently $838 million in that fund. Nobody is allowed to be more than 10% of that fund. Unfortunately, when we were in YO Star, we were about 40% of that. YO Star is also an unrated fund. This one is rated by the S and P. It gets the highest S and P rating that there is, and they look at it on a weekly basis. So this is monitored very closely. It's very liquid and they have a very, very low tolerance for any loss. So they have maintained a net asset value of right at a dollar per share. It also pays a relatively decent amount right now. It's, it's paying right about 5%. And the only thing that they ask is if we were to withdraw more than a million dollars, they want more than 24 hours notice. So that, that seems pretty reasonable. Both of the PFM and Peaks came up with very close yields to maturity on the sample investment portfolio that they had given us. One was at about 5.08, the other one was about 4.66. The 5.08 as which is if you read through the proposal, it actually provides less cash flow on an annual basis. But at maturity, because some of the bonds are purchased at a discount, that yield is incorporated at that point in time. It looks to me, after looking at it extensively, like both portfolios are very, very well managed. They have very high quality notes and bonds. And we would have the ability, in my opinion, if, if we had a liquidity concern, we would just say to the people at Peaks, hey, we want to park 15 million or 17 million, 20 million, however much into the YO class, we'd still be getting a decent return, but we could maintain a lot of liquidity that way. And by the way, Peaks had the lowest charge for assets under management at five basis points. And they don't charge an outright fee on anything that is in the YO class because they are already paid on that. So we, we just get the, the net return. It works kind of like a repo account, if you're familiar with those. Interest is paid daily and we would be credited that earnings on a daily basis. So we did a lot of research. So if there's any questions, I'd try to field them.
Are there any, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just as a point also, as he stated, this was unanimous as far as the order. It, working in committee, it doesn't happen very often like that, but there wasn't a debate. It just naturally fell out that way. It was so apparent to the committee members through individual review of those, that it just, it was, it was just a natural fallout. That is the order. There wasn't any debate other than what to do or the division or where the funds, specific percentages lay.
Yeah, well, you know, this is important for the county. I thank you, Commissioner North and you, Commissioner Milne, but also you, Kermit, and especially you for spending your time. This isn't your job. So thanks for the public service on this. I'm, I'm real pleased with, with the process and think that it worked out the way it should and that we're doing the public a good service. Commissioner North?
I have to agree with Jim. In a committee, you usually don't have things come together like that. But there wasn't any question about it. It was, it was like, this is the information and we all agreed. I mean, that was the fastest I've ever been in a committee and come to an agreement, especially a unanimous agreement on anything. So.
Yeah, we, we all individually looked at all the proposals and rated them with using a scoring card and assessing our own values on each one. And it came out lockstep.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment and a question. So, Mr. Willie, I consider you an expert because of your banking experience. You were president of the First Interstate Bank and now you're president of the state bank. And I appreciate you working on this as a citizen and a donation to this commission. As an expert, is that what you, are you recommending what's been provided to us in writing to handle the money that way?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So I'd also, on my behalf and hopefully on behalf of the commission, thank First Interstate Bank for parking these funds where they were for the last six months and for participating in the process as well. But I think that was part of our immediate obligation with respect to these funds was getting some interest accruing on them. And so we've done that and that's resulted in a significant sum for the last six plus months. So anyway, thanks to First Interstate and then thanks for your service. And so tonight we'll be approving that investment services agreement.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. We don't have a contract for the, the firms, but this will get the go ahead for us to, to get those contracts together and then should have those available for the next meeting.
Great. So we vote on it tonight, then make it subject to legal review and approval of the form?
That would, yeah, that'd be a good way to do it, I think. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what was that, January 5th date that Jim spoke of?
Yeah, that's the deadline where we're no longer accrued interest with First Interstate. The funds will just be sitting there static.
So how long will it be sitting there? It's going to take?
As soon as we vote on it, we can, the contract needs to hurry.
Like tomorrow?
Yeah, I think the treasurer's original intent was he was going to go ahead. As soon as we approved it, he was going to start adjusting. We have funds in both accounts already to a significant amount. So it, I don't know, it'd just be a matter of line item.
Okay. Or if the firms that have a contract for services, I don't, I'm not sure. Right? Okay. It may not even be necessary then that we have a.
Well, we want to make sure we just hit it somewhere by the 5th, right?
Well, interest accruing, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's okay where it is for a couple of days. They may have an engagement letter. We may modify the existing engagement letter. But Heather, if you'll task that and then coordinate with the treasurer's office, we'll get that transferred over ASAP. Okay?
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep. Anytime.
Don't say it all.
When we get another 100 million, we'll call you.
Let's, let's continue with a roundtable discussion. We have a little bit of time. So Commissioner Laird, do you want to start?
Yeah, just a couple of items. One is this Daigle letter of September 8th. It has to do with the roof at the, at the jail. And we had a discussion about that this morning. And I hadn't read, read the letter.
It's actually the ceiling.
Or the ceiling.
Not the roof.
Well, okay, you're right. Yeah, there, there is a difference between ceiling and roof. It's a roof, but it's kind of inside. And one of the things I read in his letter was he said that the past performances of the ceiling system signifies possible future damage. Extensive and intrusive special inspections of the existing conditions are recommended for medial measures are certain. We haven't done that yet, gentlemen. I'm advised by Mr. Daigle that they're putting together a letter of engagement or cost to us and we should have it this week. And we need to act upon that, I think, as soon as humanly possible, especially for what he says in the letter about what he sees the issues might be with this ceiling. And we had a long discussion about it. I don't need to go into that any further this time. Secondly, with respect to our, our county buildings, again, this morning in the meeting, Lisa Ingrish brought up that the city had hired a firm to come in and inspect all of their buildings. For some reason, I think somebody said it cost about $50,000 and I haven't confirmed that. But it's a manual they all have. They're so, she says the councilmen are all happy they have that because what this independent firm did was they came in and found things and problems with buildings they didn't even know they had. And she pointed out a couple of ceilings and roofs where they had a problem. And Mr. North was there, he could probably comment on it a little further. But she recommended that that was, or said that was one of the better things they ever did. And I know I've brought it up before and we're behind the eight ball right now on that for various reasons. But I would propose, gentlemen, that we do that and we do it as soon as possible because what we do is we get a look from an independent entity that doesn't have any bias whatsoever as to whether they're going to be engaged fixing things or not because this, this isn't what they do. So I think we'll get a report we'll all be happy with and one in which we can understand and that she says even helps them in their budgeting process for, for setting money aside. And it's just something that I hope that the commissioners will decide is a, is something that we should do so we can keep track of it. The third thing and last thing, Mr. Chairman, is I think we should, and I keep thinking the term $5 million. I'm just using that for discussion. That we somehow take $5 million and put it in a, in a special investment that we can get out quickly if we have to. It's designated simply for maintenance of county buildings. So we have that part of the lifting done where we have this money because what I'm hearing about the roof and various other things, and they're going to have to tear out more concrete and bad pipes over in the Hall of Justice Building because of the old sewer. And it was, was done in concrete and it was done with, they were explaining to me how the acid from the sewer eats up the pipes and this and that was way above my head. But it's stuff he says needs to be done. And the part is, it should probably be done now. Because if we wait till it breaks, then we have no control on, okay, people in the, in the building, you got to move out now as opposed to if we do a work, we can, we can, we can have a schedule and the sheriff and everybody that's over there knows when they're going to have to be out of a certain place so that people can work on it. Garrett was there, we talked to him about it. It's one of the big things he said because these, it's, it's like people with bad arteries. You got a bad artery, it probably means there's other bad arteries. And so we have that problem in that building. And we better attend to that right away as well.
So, so can I?
Yes, I'm done.
Let me just ask, we had discussion with Mr. Poplick a few months ago, as I recall. And we talked about kind of a red light, yellow light, green light, and maybe his initial take on facility building condition. And that's on hold right now. Is there any objection of the commissioners of the concept of having a facilities, a third party facilities report? Does anybody feel like we don't need it? Does anybody feel like, I mean, if it's $500,000, that's one thing. But if it's $50,000, to me, that's money well spent.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that I think, I agree with Dallas. I think that we need it. And the cost of it isn't that significant for them to be able to go to all of our facilities. We have aging facilities and it seems like every meeting that we have, there's something else that comes up from one entity or another that points out another fallacy that we have. So I think having somebody go through that is an experienced inspector, if you will, and just call out everything in all these buildings that needs to be done would give us a good overall picture of what our future looks like as far as repairs. So I'm in favor of it.
So Jim, Dave, you okay with the, the concept?
I think that's something that it seems like every, every month, we've got something new that, that pops up that we didn't know about. It's just like the stuff out at the fairgrounds with the bathrooms there. We got into stuff that we weren't expecting. So I think that is something that we need to look at. I think that's something that I think our current staff is, has got more on their plate than they can handle right now. And I think it'd be good to have an outside source come through and walk through things and, you know, give us an idea of what we're looking at as far as things that need to be fixed.
Well, I, I would, sorry, Jim.
No, go ahead.
No, I insist.
Well, fine. But you, you need, hit it on the head, Mr. Chairman, cost. Need to know the cost of what they're doing. But we need to designate the scope as well. Are we talking about all county buildings, period, across the board, including the outhouses? Or are we talking about just the main structures? Are we including the third, the, like the library, fairgrounds, buildings, the airport buildings? What that scope needs to be designated, then the amount should be given to us. But I don't want to hold up the process any longer than it seems like. But we do need to have the scope and the amount given to us first.
So it seems to me, I would nominate Commissioner Laird to work with legal and say Heather to at least come up with maybe kind of a plan. I don't think we're talking about outhouses. It seems like the buildings that are part of our budget every year is a good starting point. And Heather and Dallas, maybe you guys can check with the city and, and, you know, cheat off of their request for proposal because I think it would go down that path where we need to advertise, you know, for people to make proposals. But to maybe also come back to us in a month and say, here's kind of the scope as we see it. And then we'll have something tangible to actually maybe take action on.
I'll, I'll take that, I'll take that challenge on, Mr. Chairman, and I'll get with the city to see who did it. And because I've seen kind of some of it and I was really impressed because you just have a blueprint. We can look at the blueprint of like if we're talking about the, the jail or the roof or whatever, we got it right there, what they're saying is wrong. And, and I think it even might have, you know, just generalized costs, which of course probably don't apply once you get past a year on those things anyway. But my idea, Jim, is to have the major buildings, the things that if we have to pay for repairs to that library and to the airport, I think they should be on our list because if it's coming out of our wallet, we, we need to understand it from an independent perspective, an unbiased perspective.
And you, you'll work with, with Heather?
Absolutely.
Great. Commissioner North?
The other thing I'd recommend that you also do is work, work with our current maintenance department because I know Tom's already identified a lot of the AC units, air handlers and everything else that need to be changed. I know they were already working on a lot of this stuff and a lot of the things they were working on specifically at the Hall of Justice, they were already taking care of those and they were, they're already on the slate as far as things that need to be, I just don't want to see us do repetitive things and, and look at things that we, we already have identified.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that's why I, I think Heather, given the current situation with, with maintenance, can work with Garrett and kind of get up to speed on what that information is. But, but you're, you're right on not wanting to be redundant. Great. Let's try to move quickly. We've got 15 minutes for you four to do your roundtable stuff. So, well, Dallas, are you done?
I'm done.
All right.
Oh, wait, one thing. I think 2024 is going to be a good year for everybody in the county. And that means all the employees and the citizens and the commission. I really have a good feeling about 2024. So happy new, happy new year to you all and the employees who are in here and good luck down in Georgia.
Commissioner North?
This is more for Heather than anybody else since we're talking about maintenance and stuff. We do need to expedite the RFP for the roof. Okay. Because the reason why I say that is because we need to, we need to get that on the schedule soon. Because if we don't, we're going to miss our window for opportunity to get that bid out and get it taken care of this year. So, and that's at the jail. So.
I, I appreciate that. I do agree that a lot of the roofing companies are, if they haven't already built their 2024 roofing project calendar, they're right in the process of it. So sooner rather than later. Yeah. Commissioner Freel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I would, I want to add is if we go back and look at the commissioner discussion items, future meetings that comes in our packet that we add things to, seems like we've added quite a few things to it over the last year, but we never circle back to them. So I'd like to see us come back on some of these like Lake Lottery system variances. There's just, seems like a few things we've talked about that have kind of fallen through the cracks and we haven't finished those discussions on. Also, you know, I don't know where we're at, but as far as the potential land swap between the city and county and where we're at as far as appraisals and whatnot. So just some of those things, if we can double back on those and take care of some of them. That's all I got.
Mr. Vice Chair?
So the, the only thing I've got real quick, I don't know if I've told you all about this yet. In the packet here for the invoices, you'll see a scope for the, from the plumbing scope for the fairgrounds, what they found out with that stadium or with the grandstand is, is the sewer that was put into the concrete, which it, it doesn't go what they, how they wanted it for their future plans. go what they, how they wanted it for their future plans. So there's a possibility that we may just put the old stuff back in and just make it a maintenance issue rather than a full redo. Maybe you've heard that or not, or Pat, I don't know. But so it may not cost quite as much just because we can't do it.
Can you put a new one over the top of the oven? Can't do that.
It, it's going to be, it's going to be a mess if they try to do a lot. So they're looking at it, trying, the board's trying to figure out what to do at this point with the grandstand, but that's where we're at.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Freel is right that some things that, you know, we've discussed over the last year, we've been busy in a variety of ways, but we should make a concerted effort this year to work through some of the issues. Commissioner Freel, if, if you have a chance to work with Mr. Brown on some of that Alcoa Lake lottery thing, maybe we can put it on our work session schedule in the next month or two. And, you know, just let me know when you guys are ready. And I, I don't know what getting ready means. You know, I think we all have a general sense of how it works. I don't think we're looking at trying to solve it in the next meeting, but I think you'll have to kind of look into the BOR contract and, and come up with some ideas. And so if, if you wouldn't mind taking the lead on that and working with Michael, that'd be great. The SkyWest representative is coming on the ninth. We're going to have a special meeting so that hopefully all five of us, but you know, at least four of us can make that. I'm planning on being here and all mention it in my public or my comment tonight, just so that the public is aware that they might want to tune in.
They'll be here.
It'll be, it'll be in this room. And nine o'clock, I believe, Michelle. So that'll be good. You know, we are, I, I think we are all regularly receiving comments either for or against the MRG. I know I am. And so we asked for the SkyWest person to be here and they're going to be here. So I think that'll be good. So hopefully we can all make that.
What day is that? Not the ninth, but the day of the month?
Tu- Tuesday. Yeah, Tuesday. Representative Alamand said that he's trying to get school district representatives and some elected officials up to the Midwest School to look at and talk about the pool and funding for the pool. And he mentioned that would be the morning, I think of Thursday, the 11th. I haven't seen an, he said he hadn't sent out a formal invite, but he sure appreciated if one or more of us could make that. He said, he assured me that it wasn't going to be all day, that they were going to try and be back at the school facilities here in Casper by 11:00. So that gives you kind of a sense that it could be your morning, but, but not all, all day.
I do have a question that I don't quite understand. Does the commission have any duty to put a pool in up there? Is that a?
No, I don't think we have any duty whatsoever.
So is it, it's a school board issue?
It, it's a, there's a school component. And as I understand it from Representative Alamand, there's a helped take care of that community a little bit element, kind of like the water line. We weren't required to participate in that project, but we, we've chosen to and I think we all feel good about that. The, the pool is an issue he's mentioned before to us. It's a, it's a significant financial expenditure. But anyway, that's more his project and you might reach out to him if you want.
I have to talk to him in detail about it. And I've, I've swam in that pool before.
Okay.
I don't need to go see the pool. But I, where I'm, where I'm troubled is, is, is a $5 million bill. I, I guess I'm probably old enough school that it didn't used to cost $5 million for a pool. So I asked him, has he looked into that cost? He said, no. And I said, well, I hope you can look into it to some extent if you're going to have the school board people or legislators come up there because to throw out the number of $5 million for a little swimming pool, I know when we built the one out at the country club, which would be perfect for children, that was around a million dollars. And it's big enough, would be big enough for that town because you've got, I don't know how many members and their kids use that pool at the country club.
Mr. Brown, I had a question since this kind of roundtable thing. And I didn't have a chance to look back at the memorandum of understanding with the school district on the Mountain Trail Center. Did we receive those funds by the, by 12/31 this year or is it next year?
It's supposed to be by 12/31/23. I have not heard anything. So during break, I'm going down to treasurer's to see if we've received that.
Great.
So, because it, it would come direct to the county. So I would assume they just transfer or check to the treasurer's office.
Okay. After checking with treasurer, you might check with, with legal and just kind of coordinate what the next step might be if, if, I don't think we need to jump on it right away, but.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Mr. L. Bogan if they haven't received it yet. He's been our main point of contact.
Great.
Through this whole project.
Okay. I think that's it.
Yep.
Thanks. Anything else for roundtable?
Yeah, I've seen that. I've seen this. Mr. Chairman, on, on June 5th, 2023, Christie Turner, acting on both parts of the building in the planning department, submitted a 2324 Development Department budget proposal, which included a request to replace an aging county vehicles. One of the vehicles, a 2015 Ford F-150, exceeded 115,000 miles, nine model years old. At a warranty, that vehicle was replaced with a Nissan Frontier. Currently for today, I'm here for the second 2015 F-150 that's at a service, has been at a service since December 20th. It'll remain at a service deadline through the 12th of January is projected by Griner Ford. The vehicle that was retired, replaced by the Nissan, was, was put back into service in order to fulfill our inspection expectations for county residents. The, of the two vehicles requested in June, one was replaced. I request that we be permitted to purchase a second replacement vehicle from general funds. I have researched other, other makes and models for possible truck replacements. They all were in, in excess of $50,000 or more, which would require a bid, which we have the informal bids of required equipment on the vehicles in order to either be the safety level for the, the inspector and to do the, the job in the current environment that we have. I have been working with Lieutenant Nelson of the Natrona County Sheriff's Department, was going to piggyback off of their bid at the end of the, the fiscal year. Griner Ford had contacted Lieutenant Nelson, which he passed it on to me. The vehicle that I've attached to the proposal, there's, there's one on the lot, that's a white Ford Explorer. And there's a silver one that's inbound, that's not on the lot as of yet. In order for this vehicle to be used in the, in the capacity, we'd have to change out the tires, would be the only post-delivery change that we, or modification we need to make to the vehicle. Grinders is using a, a special pricing to meet our requirements. I asked that we purchased this 2023 Ford Explorer with, has four-wheel drive. The current vehicle operated by the building official, which is a 2019, I'm sorry, Ford F-150, four-wheel drive, has 27,000 miles on it. It's not being utilized at the capacity that it should. My intent would be, is to put this full-size truck in the field with an inspector in order to carry their equipment, in order for them to carry out their, their responsibilities in a safe and professional manner. The, I have attached the two window stickers for the candidate vehicles at Griner. In closing, Development Department wants to express thanks to our support in, on this, this matter with the, the commissioners. And if you have any questions on the, the repair list, this was submitted to Roden Bridge. Roden Bridge took the vehicle to Griner because they were, they didn't have the means to repair the turbo or the, find the means of the leaks of the fluid.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. So of the, so we had one vehicle that was not being used. It, it had been replaced by another vehicle earlier this year, correct?
Correct.
And that one is now back in service because you have another vehicle that is out of service waiting these repairs?
Correct.
Okay. So have we talked to Griner about, would they take those? I'm assuming that we have one that we won't be using anymore. Have we talked to them about a trade-in value on those two vehicles in, if you were to look at replacement of this vehicle?
That's a possibility. With the salesman that I've been going through, he's one who services the county purchases. That has not been pursued fully. The vehicles were about to be discharged. I discharged the retired Tahoe and was about to discharge the retired F-150 when this other vehicle was, went, went out of service and that's why it was put back into service for now.
I guess with that being said, I, maybe I don't understand this correctly, but with, with those vehicles being discharged, is that something we have to sell it at an auction or is that something that we can actually trade them in, get trade-in value on them? And I guess I look at both the attorney and the clerk. There's somebody that might know.
I think that that's fine. There's people achieving it's doing that.
Okay. And then I guess my next question is, these are, this is piggybacking on through fleet that the, that the SO is buying their vehicles, correct?
Correct. There, there was who, who notified me of this available vehicle.
Okay. I personally like the idea of going the fleet route and getting on board with the sheriff's department. I mean, the amount of vehicles that they're buying, it obviously is going to assist us in purchasing our vehicle. And I also like the idea of maybe the, the white ones, just simply to keep, get to a point where we're identifiable out there by the same colored vehicles and whatnot. So that's my personal opinion on it.
Other comment?
Did you talk to Mike at all about going in with their fleet program with the state?
I did not talk to state. No, sir. I, I talked.
No, 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 with Mike Hagler, Roden Bridge?
No, I did not.
Okay. Can you reach out to him real quick too?
Sure.
And see what he can. They may have, state may actually have something available sooner than later. So just check that out if you would. I agree with Steve. We need to participate with the fleet, get that cost savings where we can. And then I do like the idea of the identifiable and have everything, whatever with the state or with county seal on it. That'd be nice.
I guess, I guess I have a little bit of a concern. We went through a budget process last summer and you weren't privileged to be part of that. And I totally understand that, you know, you get what you get and that's the position you moved into and you'll have a full opportunity to participate in the project, in the budgeting process this year. In a sense, to me, this is a little bit of a budget creep. And by that, you, you know, the term mission creep, where things, so, so we had declined to authorize two vehicles last year for a number of reasons, but we specifically authorized one. And, and I know stuff happens and it happened to this vehicle. I'm not suggesting the vehicle is anything special. It looks like the vehicle, the vehicle will be back in service around mid-month and, and it looks like their repairs are 1,500 bucks or so for the turbo work and the other work. So my only, I guess, point is that I, I personally am not fully certain that we've risen to the level of got to have it now versus you clearly establishing that you would need it and then we budget for it during this upcoming budget process. I, I, I know that there aren't a whole lot of vehicles available in this market. And sometimes you need to strike when the iron's hot, but I would just point out to everybody listening in and, and us, us people in this room that the fact is, is that we said no to essentially this vehicle six months ago or so. And so if we feel like as a group this is worth moving forward at this point, then I'm not going to have an objection, but I, I did just want to make that point. I don't know if you all have any response to that or not.
You know, I just have one thought. It's, I'm not sure it's a response, but I know some governments give employees allowances for using their own car, number one. I know that, we did that for the city attorney of Casper actually one year. I think it's the same, maybe the manager gets that car too. But then the other thing, I don't know that, I know governments have gotten, gotten good deals on rental, renting vehicles. And I don't know if we've ever even explored that idea. I like the idea of checking with the state because they're a bigger buyer and I think if they, they, if they're buying who knows how many vehicles, we'll probably get them cheaper. When I saw what you guys attached, it only looked like Griner was giving us $300 off on a vehicle. And I don't think that's much of anything. And then, and then if there's been no attempt to see what they'd give you in a trade-in, they have a way of working all of their own numbers out on computers that I've never quite understood. But those kind of vehicles we have for trade-in probably really aren't much, worth much on a trade-in. We could probably sell them for more than we could get on a trade-in. But the other thing, was there a, an Explorer that you wanted to buy? Did I see that right?
Replace the, the black F-150 with an Explorer for, and I would use the Explorer versus the truck.
Which an Explorer isn't a truck.
No, I don't do inspections every day. I'm, I rarely go to the field as a building official and the truck is not being used to the capacity that it should be. So it's almost a waste of a vehicle that has the abilities that it could be put in the field and someone can use it safely to do their job.
Now, thank you for explaining that.
Not saying that this vehicle is not at the end of its life expectancy, but we've only got a few more months before our next budget session comes up. And right now, I would like to see us repair this one and get it back in service and then either see if we can see what the difference is between trading it and putting it up for auction. Because sometimes, you know, if you've got something that's in good shape, relatively good shape, we can end up getting a lot more for it than you ever would trading it in. Because when you trade something, then you get virtually nothing. I mean, that's just, that's, they've got to turn around and make money on it and that's where they make their money. So that's kind of the way I, I look at it. As far as the fleet vehicles go, there's frozen cost fleet vehicles. If you need something and you need it right, right away, or something that you're looking at specifically, there's a lot of vehicles out there that have
at specifically, there's a lot of vehicles out there that have a whole lot less maintenance requirements than others. And I think that's something that we need to look at. And sometimes we can get that in the fleet, sometimes we can't. So as far as the long-term aspects of things, just because the sheriff department is buying a certain brand or the state is buying a certain brand, that doesn't mean, necessarily mean that it's the best one for what we have. I mean, we have a lot of different uses and a lot of different things. And so I prefer to look at the long-term maintenance cost and the return on the backend. You know, I've got some vehicles that are 15 years old that still bring a premium because of the brand they are. And I've got others that lose value. Like a rock every year. They, I won't name any specific brands, but, uh, but they don't all hold their values. And I think that's something that we need to look at when we, when we're buying stuff. We need to get the most bang for the buck for the citizens of this county and be responsible in what we do and how we do it. So hope that makes sense.
I, I've got a, I've got a response if I can. And as a director in Tennessee, I was on the fleet committee and we used the state of Ohio highway department. They had a program and they created a formula on vehicles for vehicle use in a, the assigned of value in a, in a lifespan, much like a water heater service life. Excuse me, after five model years, the vehicle stops being an asset and starts becoming a liability to whatever municipality or government that owns the vehicle. And the, my concern, I mean professionally, is as a steward to the county, but first, first and foremost is to the safety of my inspectors. Having driven some of these roads, the washboard condition of some of them with winter about to drop on us, I question the reliability of these aging vehicles and putting somebody out there. That's why I was pushing for it. Now, I know, I understand budget creep and, and just coming out of nowhere, but as I said, my, my concern is the safety of my people and I have to make sure that they do their job and they, and they can, they can fulfill the requirements safely. And it just seemed like a better, a better deal. I did look into with the, the county sheriff with their purchasing of the number of vehicles, they are the quantity, but I can't get half-ton pickup trucks anywhere because now they are going to pursuit vehicles. And realistically, I cannot put an inspector in a pursuit vehicle. So the, the bid with the county is they're going to have explorers for court process and leave the, the, uh, the Alkova in the boat officers or deputies, they'll have one-ton super duties. I can't realistically for the fuel in the, in the expense, put an inspector bouncing around in a one-ton truck either. So the, the lesser of all evils and the best fit would be to go to an explorer because I don't go to the field all the time. That black truck is just sitting there and it goes to an apartment, to the parking lot, back and forth when it could be utilized to its full capacity.
Mr. Chairman. So using that line of thought, how about you take this older vehicle and go ahead and put the newer truck out?
I can do that as well.
And then that way, that truck, that older truck that you're worried about stays in town where you have support if it does break or something like that, right?
I can do that.
This is something we do need to look at though, probably come budget, but I do that exercise with Mike Hagler, just see what you got so that you're more up to speed with what he can offer as well when budget time does come around.
I, tongue in cheek here. I would like to see you have a vehicle, not a pursuit vehicle, but one that's pursued sometimes that can get away.
What, what other direction or guidance do we have for Patrick?
You know, I thought what he said was well, oh, excuse me.
I, I agree with Jim. If we can take, take that older vehicle and keep it in town until we can make it through, until we can make it through this next budget season and put the black Ford out there that doesn't have a whole lot of miles. To me, that makes a lot more sense. I mean, right now, if you're not going out there and doing a lot of inspections, yeah, keep it in town where you don't have to worry about that. You know, because you're not, there's not that many miles on, you know, on the black one right now, are there?
27.
Yeah. So that would make a lot more sense to me at this point in time. And then we can look at it in the state's budget session and, and we know there's a need, but that way we can, we can get it budgeted and get it taken care of.
Commissioner Laird?
I actually thought what he said was well put. I'd give him the vehicle, but I'd want him to check with Hagler. And I think he, he goes out there and looks him in the eye rather than over the phone, they might give him a better deal anyway on these trade-ins. I'd like to hear about that if you want to waste the time doing it, but I, I, I think we ought to have decent county vehicles for people to drive and ones that aren't breaking down. I agree with all of the commissioners about it being a budget item, but occasionally they go outside of that if you give them the right information. Thank you.
Well, I'm all about giving, making sure that our people have the equipment they need to do their job. So I'm not really against going outside of this because obviously we've got a couple of vehicles, one down now, one you pulled out of retirement to make ends meet. I do agree with getting, if the vehicle's just sitting there and it has very low miles on it, be better off in the field. I, I agree with that's where it needs to be. If we had another suitable vehicle, I would say, you know, I don't know if we still have a pool vehicle or not, but if we had a suitable vehicle that we can get you into for the next few months to get by until budget, that's an option too. I'm going to take this a step further and kind of reiterate what's been said though is that I think that we need to really look at, at fleet because it'll be cheaper for us if we do in fact go through the state. I think that's a great idea to jump onboard there. But if you look out at what we have, we have a lot of, of American and foreign vehicles. And, and I question at times on some of these vehicles that get bought is, you know, do our maintenance people understand what goes into fixing some of these vehicles? And do we have the parts for some of these vehicles? I'd rather see it get streamlined where we have a certain brand or a certain couple brands so that we're not tasking our, our maintenance people to have to learn something else when something breaks down that, that they're not used to. I mean, if, you know, and again, not to use brands, but if you had two brands and that's what it was, it would certainly make things a lot easier for our maintenance people when things break down, so.
So I'm hearing two leaning toward having it be part of your budget and two leaning toward now maybe part of your budget. Is that what you guys are hearing as well?
Actually, I think everybody's thinking along the same lines. We're just trying to get it for the best price at the best time and do the best by our employees. And he's going to get some more information. I'd like to hear about when he does that, if that changes anybody's particular thrust of how they would want to do it.
Come back in two weeks?
Do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Christie.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Hi. Hi, Stacy. Good. Welcome.
Thanks. So we have two items on this work session agenda. And the reason I put the one on was because I wasn't sure if you all had ever actually seen that, the MOU, because it was one of those documents unfortunately that we found with the new administration. And so I've been working on updating it and getting all the signatures. And so that's why I asked Ms. Hill here so she could explain that or maybe you all had seen that. Okay?
So I'm happy you're here to talk about it a little bit.
Great.
And, and the necessity of it. And then the, some of those costs that I didn't quite understand.
Okay.
And why we need the agreement.
Fair. And that is why I brought along the expert because I, I, I'll do the legal part. She'll be the expert in the substance of the, the MOU. Okay, so the first MOU that she's talking about is the navigation MOU. And what it is, is YDOT is working with Google and other entities that provide mapping on your phone. YDOT has the ability to provide these mapping companies information on road closures that is specific to Neptuna County. So if a road is closed for say a severe storm or something like that, they can share this with the navigation companies and it shows up on the mapping that shows up on their Tom Toms, navigation maps, whatever. They can also do seasonal closures. So like Casper Mountain, when Muddy Mountain closes either today or tomorrow, that will automatically show up on the routes. So they'll know that it's a closed route. Or they can show secondary routes. So if the primary route is closed, they can show secondary routes. There will be a little of work that needs to be done with, between Hagler and GIS on how they're getting that information to YDOT. But once, once it's to YDOT, then it goes out across the platforms.
Stacy, since it has been a habitual problem in the past, does that also show that Casper Mountain Road is not meant for semi-trucks?
Yes. It will, it will show it and it can show. So like Casper Mountain is a good example because Casper Mountain has a lot of community that lives up there. So is it closed completely down or is it closed only partway up to where people can still get to Garden Creek or the lower roads? Or is it shut completely down and for how long? So it will show all that information on the mapping.
Okay. Well, I just heard that was an easy example.
Yeah.
Yeah, really easy example because I don't know how many times the trucks have gone up there and created more problems and it's worth thinking that they could go across and make a shortcut around the backside.
Yep.
So, okay.
What's the cost of this?
There is no cost for us.
I keep saying, I thought, I thought I saw 16,000 and some dollars.
That's the next one.
That's the next one?
That's the next-
I'm putting them all together, I guess, because they were all stuck together.
No, there is no cost for this one. And it does, I mean, there are multiple times per year where we have to send out search and rescue crews to go get people who are stranded because they've gone on a back road that they shouldn't have. So it, it really is for the betterment of the community, I believe.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, Commissioner Mail.
So Stacy, you almost answered the question that I have. Last year with all the road closure for the, I can't tell you how many people I pulled out of Oregon Trail. And I, will that fix this problem where because 220 is closed for a week, people think they can go down Oregon Trail and get stuck?
Well, it will only fix the problem if people are actually using the app.
That's-
Right?
Most of the people that went that way, when I talked to them, that's how they were directed is the apps send them that way.
Yep. Because it would shut down, it can shut down a primary road and it can shut down secondary roads also. So it, it's just, it would take some work with Hagler to make sure what roads needed to be shut down. But all of that information then can be pushed out to the apps.
Awesome. Thank you.
It seems to me there to be little downside. We can terminate this agreement on 30 days' notice if we don't like it. I can't imagine with there being zero cost that it become a problem, but I, I do see in this paragraph A, or the data feed requirements imposed by navigation companies may be changed from time to time and YDOT will coordinate with us to ensure compliance. You know, if that turns into a quarter of a million dollars, we might want to terminate this agreement, but you know, maybe it's, maybe compliance is having some protocol in place for someone at Mike Hagler at Roden Bridge to give them information on a more regular basis. So, you know, if there are any costs that do arise or if this becomes complicated or problematic, let us know, but otherwise I think it's straightforward. So the other one?
So the other one I asked Michelle to put on here only because we were already on the agenda and I can talk fast and get them done in 10 minutes. But this one, I actually have some, I hope some understanding of this one. I, I, the other one, I was a little confused. So this is my understanding of this one is the alerts would be the alerts that we get when the county's closed or something bad is good going on in the county. And these alerts come out to us who have signed up for the service. And that this contract, and I've looked at the original as well as the master service agreement, it wasn't included in your packet and that this is in, there's no price increase. But what my understanding is, is that this allows for more text messaging and less phone calls.
Correct.
So I think I have that straight in a layman's term.
Is, I don't know this company, is this, the, I assume this is one of the big companies that works for governments in this realm?
Correct. So it was previously referred to as AlertSense, which was what we signed up for. Since then, they have rebranded to Connectus. It's the same company. We've been with this company for three years now. And it's our mass notification system for not only internal employees, but also for notifying community members if there's something going on in the community that they need to be aware of.
So three years we've been with them? You happy with them?
Very much so.
Great. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. I think we're good.
Okay.
Anything else you don't get to see us very often? It's nice to see you. Do you have anything you want to weigh in on in terms of winter coming up and how you're prepared? And are we looking okay from your perspective?
I think everything from my perspective is looking okay. And hopefully winter just doesn't show up and we get a bunch of rain in the spring. I really don't want to have miles and piles of snow everywhere again. It was a bad winter last year. So it was hard on people and it was hard on livestock. So I'm sorry. We do, and there is some snow up on the mountain. I have snow at my house, so flatlanders, you guys, I know you don't, but that's okay.
Great. Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stacy, Jim will be, if you can give him the connection for tomorrow or however you're doing that, he'll-
Yeah, send me a, bye.
I will. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to take a short break and then we're going to hear from, I see Mr. Griffith back there. So this is your break. And we're going to hear from the clerk, the clerk Good. And the crew chick.
Worse than the population by then.
Oh, sure. Sure. We'll see. I don't know. Very random. We don't really have a lot of information, but do this. Right, right.
All right, let's get going. Lisa Scroggins, John Griffiths, and our city managers, welcome. There he is. Hello. So y'all are welcome to come up and have a, have a chair.
I'm gonna let Mike and John have their chairs. I'll get this one. I'm gonna sit over in this.
There's your city manager too, Peter.
We'll stick.
The city manager too.
Well, I'll only stay here for a moment.
Yeah, it's your, your presentation. So welcome. Good to see all of you. What do you know?
Well, it's, it's good to be here. That's what we know. I've got a very brief statement and then I'm going to turn this over. But Chairman and Commissioners, as the President of the NCL Trustees, we recognize it is important for you to hear directly from us your appointees regarding a new library building project. Providing a modern public library for our community has been a priority for the NC Library Boards over the past decades. As you're aware, to oversimplify that need, the Board notes the current facility has structural and design issues that negatively impact its usage and ADA compliance. In addition, the age of the building has led to deterioration issues. The size is simply too small to meet the needs of this community. And at this time last year, we received a notice from Casper Fire Chief's Building Inspector that we must address the issues. The Library Board appreciates John Griffith's passion, his professional skills in this area, his dedication as a volunteer. And we are 100% in support of the proposals John will be making regarding how we can approach a new library capital construction project. And so really that's the important thing that I have to say is that our Board supports what Mr. Griffith is saying, is going to say, and what he's been working on for the last several years that I've been on the Board of Trustees. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk.
All right. You're on the hot seat.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Chairman, good to see you. Commissioners. Wanted to spend a little bit of time today. Thanks again for allowing us to come in front of you because we were here a couple of months back and, and talked about the need of a, for a new library. And that this, and I'm not going to hash over those, but this community, there is still a need and that part hasn't changed. And these conversations that I'll, that I'll summarize have essentially been going on for a number of years now, I think since 2019. I've been working on, on this effort and obviously we had some challenges with COVID in the middle of that, but, but ongoing conversations. And I think the desire from the Board, the Foundation Board, the desire from the Trustees and also the desire from this Commission has all been positive and productive in understanding that we're all aiming for the same goal and trying to figure out how to get there. Now, we were here a couple of months ago. I believe it was September, maybe October, with a presentation where we asked for help with the funding of the design of a, of a new facility. And at that time, that request admittedly came with a handful of unknowns. Unknowns were how big is it going to be? What's it going to look like? And quite honestly, I think there was maybe a little bit of reservation from the Commission as to where it was going to go. So I am, I am proud to say that there's been a lot of, through that, that same timeframe over the, the last handful of years, a lot of productive conversations with City Manager Carter and City of Casper. And they've been good partners with us as we have looked at and have determined that the possibility for us changing sites for a new library is both viable and I think productive for us. And they've been a good partner with us and have gotten to a point now where we're all, all that's left with them is kind of signing over some, some final paperwork. But with that request that we had in October, there was a lot of unknowns and I think it was a challenge to us to come back when we know more or how can we figure out a way to move forward was simply not just, I think we had a request of three and a half million dollars, which I understand was too, was not palatable at the time. And that's fair. And so then we were, we were stuck with how can we figure out a way to continue to be productive and move forward? And quite honestly, our request today was the effort to get there was, came from initial conversation, Commissioner Mill and from yourself, where it was asked, what can we do with a lesser amount of money? And initially, we didn't think that we could do a whole lot. However, we've since had conversations with the state and their construction department and conversations with multiple design teams around the region and have come up with, not come up with, but what we're requesting today is to go through and follow a process that the state uses for their construction projects, which is to phase the design. And there's four different phases for they, that they use for designs, levels one, two, three, and four. And what we're asking today is for two things. One, to help us fund phases one and two or levels one and two of that construction design. And two, also to commit the existing county health department building to this, to the library project in this new location. Because right now we're looking at relocating and, and taking over a chunk of land that's owned by the city currently. I think it's commonly known as a Source Gas property. Vacating a portion of Spruce Street there. And then also, golly, I think it was 2018 or 19, we did a feasibility study for that same chunk of land and had found out or discovered that that, a, a new building will fit on that site. And then the parking requirements can be met if we utilize the, the property where the existing county health department is. So our request today is to fund the levels one and two and then also get a commitment for that building. The funding of levels one and two, what that does, A, is it's a much lower commitment from a, a funding standpoint to get started, A. But B, what that does is that helps us determine two things, well, multiple things I should say. What it does is it helps us then formalize our agreement with the city to where we can, we can make that commitment to the city and they can make it to us to where we can take ownership of that chunk of land and know that that's where we're going to be moving forward. B, that will allow us to, to start the design process for a new facility and get us to a point where we can understand for sure how big of a building we're going to have because of the design, the design team will then go through over the next four to six months, their efforts with the library, with the library staff and figure out what those true needs are for our specific building, for our community as opposed to using regional averages, which is what we did when we came back in October. And by doing that and understanding for sure how big the building will be, how it will fit on the site, how many stories it'll be, it takes away a lot of the unknowns. And then we can look at what the hard costs will be for construction again, as opposed to using regional assumptions and averages. Come back to you at that point and be able to highlight the money that we're able to raise also by starting this effort. So our funders, our donors, our supporters can also understand that this is a real project. It is moving forward and allow us to do our fundraising efforts where we can come back with hard numbers and then continue the discussion about how we're going to fund the project to get it built, continue the design and then get it built. So back in November, I had sent a letter to then Chairman Freel requesting this. And we've had some scheduling conflicts since then, challenges, maybe not complex, but challenges since then. But grateful to be here today and want to see what questions you may have about that request or the process that's gotten us to this point. So, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here and thanks for both the background and for the vision forward. What questions do we have for John or Lisa?
I have, I have a couple.
Commissioner Laird.
So I, I get a lot of questions about the library. And I, I only answer them if I have any real understanding of the facts, which I, I don't feel that I do have. And one of the ones is that people ask me, well, what's wrong with the current library? And then they say, well, can't you just do remodeling on it or add up to it? So I want to be able to fluently talk to the public about that because I do believe we need a new library, but I can't, I don't have the ability right now to put, put the words out I would like to put out that were right. After I was finished talking to the people, they'd say, you know, that's a good idea and I want to support that library. And I, I think that a lot of what's happening in our community now is just that. That, that the explanations aren't there. They go by the building. It's downtown Casper. It's a brick building. It looks pretty nice. They got a parking, you know, everything back there. And probably haven't been in the library themselves in years. So, so if you can give me an answer for that, I would really be appreciative. And it's not that I'm questioning what you're doing. I want to be able to, when I get questioned, I like to have, I like, then I like to say, I've, I've spoken to the head cheese and the head cheese and I, here's what they told me.
Certainly. Thank you for that. I'm going to kind of keep this brief because there is a laundry list. There's this huge report, the MOA report from 2013. That was included, I think part of it, the whole report, I think part of it was included in the paperwork that we gave you or the proposal we gave you back in September-ish. But for the sake of time, there are just a few issues that I'm going to touch on. And one of them is in that report back in 2013, when they did a complete analysis of the facility itself. In 2013, it was deemed to be in critical failure already. So while it looks nice, because we do, we are stewards, you, we are paid to be stewards of the place in which we are providing services. And we have a really good facilities department and good leadership. providing services. And we have a really good facilities department and good leadership. We keep it looking nice. But in reality, the building has some pretty significant issues. So one of the things is ADA, Mike mentioned that in his brief opening statement. We are out of ADA compliance. I've received last month, I think it was, or maybe in the last 45 days, I've received three different communications from two of, from members of our Friends of the Library group and one from another person in the community that had ADA issues reaching their destination in the library. So that is an issue. I know that when Representative Washett came to do a walkthrough of our facility recently, my facilities manager was able to take him to the exterior of the building and take a key and poke into the side of the building and out through the paint, when he scratched the paint deep enough pours sand because the facility is actually crumbling in some places. I know that when we replaced-
How old is the building? How old is the building?
The youngest part of the building, I believe, is 51 or 52 years old. And the older part of the building is over 70 years old. And of course, then there's all the nooks and crannies that additions. When you add on to a building, it creates issues with security and safety and line of sight and all that. And that's where we say the building is not functional in its current design, where we have design issues. But we have ADA issues. We have a lack of space. We have in one area close to where, so all of you, I don't think Commissioner Freel, you've had the opportunity, but the rest of you have come and done a walkthrough of the library. And part of that is to show you like the room where the breaker boxes and stuff are because the infrastructure is quite aging and old. To get to that, we walked through a room, and you probably don't remember this, but it's tiny. It's like 345 square feet, and that's the office for seven staff members. It's tight. It is really tight. And it's hard for them to get their job done when you're just literally on top of each other. But we lack a lot of spaces that a modern library should be offering to their community. And that would be everything from quiet reading rooms. So when you go to a public library, it is a community hub where people come together. So it's not always quiet. But you need a quiet reading room. You need study rooms and a lot of different spaces. But we need to be able to have an elevator where a person in a wheelchair can actually go in or electric scooter can go in and turn and reach the panel instead of depending on somebody else to reach it because they don't have room to turn around. Or when you're a member of a board that's appointed by you and you're serving as a trustee, and you have mobility issues because you've had an injury where you can't get to the meeting on your own, and you have to require assistance because there is no elevator to the mezzanine area. So the entire administration wing and the teen zone is not ADA accessible or even by a tiny elevator. So there is a lift, which is kind of scary to use, to be honest. And it shifts and will rock, and it is dangerous. We use it only to take carts up and down.
Let me interrupt just a second. Where I need help is this. Why couldn't we remodel it and put a nice addition on it? I get, I've probably been asked that question. I didn't get the question asked over Christmas, but almost every other day I get asked that about people wanting to know about what are we doing with the library. So why couldn't we remodel it? And why couldn't we add on to it? And what would be the problem with that?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, that's a fair question and one that we also get a lot. And I think it's twofold. One, the existing issues that we have in the building to make it up to code, we received a quote to do in 2015, and that was roughly $7 million just for the existing building. So I don't-
To do what?
To bring the building up to code. And that was in 2015. I don't have to tell you the construction costs have changed since 2015. So there's, there's some costs there. But secondly, right now, the building as it sits has roughly 67 parking spots. For the size of the building, we're supposed to have about 220. And we don't have that. We don't have the room to put that much parking on. We don't have the room to add parking. If we also then look at expanding the building and need more parking, we don't have the room for that. And so the way the site is sitting, we don't have the room to expand that facility.
Okay. Now, see, now that's a nice way of putting it.
And to that point-
So I'm looking at the manager over there, and I happen to usually walk my dog along there many, many times, that back sidewalk where you go over the nick.
Sure.
And, and so I'm wondering, how much of that property could you ever acquire and use for parking if you needed it? Where they could, you just, you take out the walkway where that one area is where they built the, what do they call that metal place where all the homeless people used to be, where they took the furniture out? So I'm assuming that's city property that goes back in there. Can that be used for anything?
Well, I can tell you this, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, that we, when we did the study on the existing, for lack of a term, source gas property, we looked at what we could do on the existing facility and, and increase our parking to accommodate the building size that we needed. And we needed all of the space where, I don't know if it's still open up, but where Village Inn is and the Skyline Towers, I believe is what it's called. Forgive me if I'm wrong on that. So we needed all of that property plus the city walk path that you're needing, that you're talking about, to accommodate an expansion and the proper amount of parking. So while I think, you know, the conversation could be had about possibly acquiring that, it's still not enough land for the proper amount of parking that the facility needs and should have.
Well, let me see if I can sum this up because I, the people that ask me these questions don't want to talk to me that long.
Can understand.
They can't remodel it, and they can't expand it because it's too old and there's not enough land there.
Right.
That's a good way to say it.
If it's just going to get old and die, that's where it will get old and die. But we don't want that to happen in our community. We want to, we want really a nice library.
Yes, sir.
One that our whole community is proud of, one that the children like to go to, one that people aren't harassed when they go down there. So that's what we're trying to do.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Exactly.
I feel better now. Thank you.
I'm pleased to report that Commissioner Laird is feeling better now. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the umbrella, the 30,000 overview that you just gave us for a plan. That's, that's, works for my brain a lot better than what originally came in with. I would like, or ask that you kind of get into a little bit of the specifics, though, for Phase One, what you're looking at, what, what you're doing here with those. Basically, what, what do you need? What, what is, what with Phase One, or what, where are we going with this?
As far as costs.
As far as everything, why are you here?
I just like coming to see you guys.
Okay.
Quite honestly.
Well, that's good.
You can leave now.
Yeah.
No, wait.
We do want to know-
But yeah, no.
Fair question.
If you could kind of give a little bit more specific, not to 30,000, but get into the, the Phase One at least, a little bit, if you could.
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Millen, I appreciate that. And I did bring copies of the letter that I had sent back in November that also includes the state statutes. Because I think that's, that's one of the things that we really wanted to utilize is not saying that we're, we're coming up with this idea or reinventing the wheel, that we are following state statutes with this, with this idea. And so a Level One and Level Two study gets us into the details of understanding the site. How can we put a building onto a location? What do we have for utilities that we need to pull in? How do we access the site? It gets us into understanding the structure. That's important because when we look at it, is it two-story or three-story? Those are things we don't know at this point. Or is it one-story? I don't know that. But that gets into the structure. So that, that tells us into the foundation, gets us into a geotechnical report so we can understand what's going on with the soils. From there, we also get into size of the building. So we can look at, you know, conversations would be had with staff. So we can understand how much room do we need? Where is the community today? Where is it going to be in five, 10, 15 years? So we can look at the size of the facility, gets into exterior finishes, gets into the electrical mechanical design, so that we can take all of that information to either a general contractor or professional estimating company and say, this is how much this building is going to cost. So that's a lot of what we're after, is trying to define those things. And our request for that is 500, not, not to exceed $550,000. And with that request, we have had numerous conversations with design teams around the region and said, this is what we're after. Because it's in the state statute, it's well defined. So that language is known, and we're able to convey that very well, and they understand that. The not to exceed amount, I think, is appropriate. And, and we would not be coming back to this commission to say, we need additional funds to complete that study. In addition, I would tell you that the Library Foundation has committed to funding up to 10% of that same amount, so that we're able to also have skin in the game, A. But then B, we've also had conversations with Lisa Hubbard, which I think is somebody you're familiar with, maybe from the Health Department building, to help us out with the RFQ process to go find it, to go through the process properly to find a design team on that. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Millen?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that would fulfill the, the starting requirement for the land swap with the city, then I take it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And to that end, I guess let me say that the next phase of the design would be Level Three, which then takes all of that information and then details it out, the, the non-exciting part of it, if you will. And then Level Four is the construction administration part of that, once the, once the building would get to a point where it's ready for construction. So, so our request is twofold. One, for help with the funding. Two, with committing the, the building that the Health Department currently sits in right now. From a timing standpoint, just so everybody's kind of on the same page, we're looking at, maybe optimistically, but looking at roughly a month or so to get through paperwork and get everything signed and start the point where we could advertise for an RFQ for design teams. That probably pushes us out after that another six to eight weeks to get them on board and signed and everything moved on. And then about another five months, once they're on board, five to six months, once they're on board, before we're completed with that Level One, Level Two study, that we would then have that information where we could talk again. And I say that timeframe because I think it is, I want to be sensitive to the current Health Department facility, knowing that that new building has not started construction yet, and I don't think is slated to until April, May of this year, and probably not wrap up till, if I understand it right, sometime in 2025, fall of 25, which this full process for a bigger facility in this phased approach would take us well into roughly that timeframe. So I don't think we're looking at a overlap of a need for that space while they're still utilizing that facility.
Okay. And one last question I have is if the land swap did occur, and the Health Department's still where they're at, would we have a commitment by the Library Foundation to continue to allow the Health Department to use the source gas property as they are now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Millen, I think you're referring to the trailers that they have operating on the C cans. And so, you know, my, my thought is that the second request that pertains to our commitment to donate the land on which the current Health Department operates at, at the time when it's no longer needed by the Health Department, is, is at least not an issue for me. And it's something that I could personally individually commit to today under that important condition. So as it relates just to that condition-
I'm, I'm in favor of that condition.
So you're in favor of that commitment?
Yes.
Are there, is there any other comment or questions or concerns about committing the land under that or with that condition?
Mr. Chairman, I am also 100% behind that commitment. At the end of the day, when we vacate the Health Building, we are going to have an empty building there. It makes sense to make this part of this campus. So I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. You know, once, once the Health Department is built and that's vacated, I don't have any problem. I don't have any issue at all with making that commitment. But I just want to make sure that that's taken care of first. That's our first priority. That's where we've got-
Sure.
That's where we've got all our money heading toward for the next couple of years. And so that's something that we have to take care of the Health Department first. You know, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that in our most optimistic dreams that we would have for the construction of the new library, that we would not have a conflict with the existing Health Department and its facility and the library on this new location.
I would say, and I know Commissioner Laird, you may have something you wanted to say, but I would say, while the Health Department has every intention of reopening sometime in December of 2025, you never know. And we haven't broken ground yet. And I think that the reality is that it could be a couple more years. Now, that's not, you know, news. It's not that I have any information that that's the case. All I know is things cost a lot and take a lot of time when you're talking about big construction projects. So I think that, you know, we can all talk about a couple of year timeframe, but it might be a slight tad bit longer than that, and it is what it is.
My one question. And I want you all to smile. I want you all to think happy thoughts about this. And I want you to visualize this. When can I see a new library in the Trona County? I want somebody to tell me. You know, my dad used to say, well, if you visualize that car, you really want that car, and you really start thinking about that car. Finally, 40 years later, I got that car.
So Commissioner Laird, I think that's a great segue into request number one. You know, the, you've made clear to us what your request is for up to not to exceed $550,000 with a commitment by the Foundation to pay for up to 10% of that. And I guess before we dive into that conversation, to respect his time, does City Manager need any other clarification? I think you hear where we're coming from. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So then let's go back to this, this other issue. We do have a lot of requests on a daily basis for funding. We try and be good stewards of the public's money. We try and budget and stick to budgets. This wasn't part of our budget. So let's talk money. Questions, comments on, on the funding of this 500, not to exceed $550,000?
Mr. Chairman, I think we have the money. And it isn't a budget time. And, and so I understand that. I'm in favor of giving you the 550,000 and finding the money because I think this project is something that will be good for this community for 50 to 100 years past me being gone. I'd really like to see it before I am gone, truthfully. And so I asked the treasurer the other day about money, and he said we had some money, and it was in this basic ballpark. The issue is, you know, as, as the chairman has stated, a lot of people want money, and they all have good causes. And so, but I just happen to think we need a library. I'm, I feel a little, I'm sad over losing the hospital. And I think it's time we built another county building that will help our people. And I don't think we're able to do that with a hospital. And I'm, I'm happy with the library. Not that it will serve the same thing as a hospital, but it's kind of like a hospital of the mind, run properly, and, and people have respect for it. And it's in a good location, and it's easily attainable, and it's up to date and new. Because that's what people like today.
Yes, sir.
Are there, are there other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have had discussions with John about this. And, and this is finally getting things on the right path, I believe. For the longest time, we have not known a location of where you're going to build something. For the longest time, we have not known a location of where you're going to build something. I feel that the numbers that have been put out there in the past really don't, they don't tell you what the costs are today. It doesn't tell you what size of a building you're building. It's not going to give you a, a direct cost. And so this benefits on twofold. We know what the ultimate cost is going to be, but when it comes to fundraising, now you can go out with a solid number and fundraise and be able to tell people what this is going to cost to build it. Before, I, I personally don't think you could have done that. So I think, I think this is the right direction to go. It's, it's a foot forward. We're certainly solidifying where this is going to be built at. And forever, we've just been going in a circle and I think we finally have some direction as to getting something going. Are we committing to building a brand new library today? No, we're not, but what we are committing to is giving the land that's needed for it, having a home for it and figure out what the cost is going to be to build that. So I'm behind putting some money towards this so we can start moving this thing in the right direction.
Commissioner North.
At this point, I know I'm sounding like a broken record on this. I just, with the, with the amount of things that we have coming up, I just don't see where we have the money right now to do that. As far as, you know, providing that, that land, once the Health Department has moved, that's, that's a totally different story. That's not going to cost us anything at this point in time, but we're looking at replacement of the, the roof at the detention center, as well as doing work in the jail. Inside, we've got numerous projects that we're already involved in that have, that are basically already been committed. You know, we have over $800,000 we got to come up with for Midwest Waterline. It's just the timing issue is really what, what I'm looking at right now. I just don't see where we have the money at this point in time because of all the other commitments that we've got. And I'm, you guys know, I was on the board for two years and I, I sat there and I went to, I think I only missed one meeting during that two-year timeframe. And that's because I was sick. So, you know, I understand the, the needs that we have. But right now, I just, the timing is just, with everything that's gone up, with the cost of everything that's going up, going through the roof, and you guys know that, that's not anything new. You know, we just, we just turned down a request for, for a vehicle because it wasn't in the budget. You know, right now, with everything that we've got coming up, we have to have everything budgeted. I'm just a firm believer of that. And in the middle of the year is not the right time to come in and ask for that big of a chunk of change, you know, to do that. And so I hope that makes sense, you know. Our realistic one individual when it comes to looking at the financial situations, but by knowing that the county is willing to give that property, then the city can go ahead and move forward. You guys have a place and you can start looking at things. So, you know, where the Health Department is currently, so that, that is a step forward and we are moving forward on that.
Yeah, sorry, one, one point of clarification. We didn't turn down the vehicle or request. We punted, I think, and, and we're going to talk to that individual in, in two weeks after we get some more options and information. Commissioner Laird, I'm sorry, not you.
I do have one more comment.
I'm new here. Commissioner Mill.
Thank you for attending, Mr. City Manager. I kind of got a question for you, so I'm glad you didn't run away real quick. The, the funding for the Phase One and Two that is being requested right now, will this influence the city as far as the land swap, the transfer goes? As far as if we do not or do provide the funding?
Chairman, Mr. Mill, we probably will advocate for moving forward regardless of what the decision is on the, on the money side of this equation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of clarification, I think our foundation has been pretty firm that we will not be moving forward with our agreement with the city if we're not moving forward with a design for a new facility from a funding standpoint. Because I think if we're, what we're looking to do then is trade one chunk of dirt or another chunk of dirt without a change in the process. And so I, I guess I would say, and it's, it's not a threat or anything like that. It's just from a point of clarification that I don't believe the foundation would look to move forward with the, the land swap or land deal, if you will, with the city of Casper. If we're not looking for some, a difference maker in the way of funding for moving forward with a new facility.
Thank you for that clarification, though I, I would respectfully challenge you a little bit in that I think your path is clear if you know, not only you have the Source Gas lot, but you also have the Health Department building lot. And, and then that kind of makes more of a package and I, I think you're getting some remuneration from the city on the, the difference in, in land value. So I, I think one could take issue with, with, with your position, but if the foundation's feeling is that it chooses not to move forward and unless there's the financial commitment, then that's, you know, it's prerogative. My question is, are you confident that whatever comes from this Phase One, Phase Two report is a work product that can be utilized by the people doing Phase Three and Phase Four? Because in my experience, you get a professional to do part of the job and the next professional, who may not be the same outfit as the first professional, says, you know, we don't like this or it's a little stale, we want to start from scratch. And then you haven't well utilized that not to exceed $550,000. And so are you confident that you're going to be able to use this work product, you know, moving forward in the process? Because I don't want to pay for it twice.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I respect that comment. And I think that, I would tell you, that's one of the reasons that we have had initial conversations with Lisa Hubbard. She's a long-term architect in this community and is a, a solid confidant for us that would help us to find that right design team because it would be our intention that this design team would be not just for Level One, Level Two, but would work with the foundation, with library staff and with the community to figure out a building that does work for the budgets and all of, all of the different variables that are at play. So to the extent that's, that's possible, I would say, yes, I am confident in that through the process.
Because you can't commit contractually to a Level Three or Level Four at this time.
From, if, Mr. Chairman, help me understand that because I, we can.
Well.
We can. It's just a matter of funding.
Right.
Agreed.
We are not committing to that.
I respect that.
Or are we being asked to, but.
Correct.
So yeah, I guess, I guess you sure can. You ought to confer with us maybe before signing.
Yes.
In any event, are there other questions or?
I, I did have a question that gets back to what, what people say to me and so I'm going to ask them and it's, this is a controversial issue too. But I think it's necessary for me to do this because I've already made the comment in here a couple of weeks ago. We're, we're supplying a great deal of money to SkyWest Airlines to stay here and they're coming in to talk to us next week why we should keep doing that. And it's, I don't know exactly how much it is, but it's over a million or so dollars per year. And I've had several people that come here that if I'd have had a necktie on, they'd have grabbed me by the necktie. And when they say, well, why would you give money to a billion-dollar corporation to keep that airline here when you, you could, one of the things you could do, you could use it to fund the library. You could use it to build a new hospital. I get that. The hospital issue is a big issue. I get that a lot about giving money and getting with some doctors and, and getting a county hospital sort of thing going again. And I actually like that idea. I don't know that there's any possibility of that. So why, why should, because they're, they're right about money and our expenditure of money and who we give money to. So why should we not give money to SkyWest Airlines to keep them here? Don't know for how long. And instead give that, because that would cover you.
I think that's a rhetorical question. We're about out of time.
It may, it may, but why, why, what should I say to these people when they say that to me?
I don't, are you asking them what you should tell them?
I knew you wouldn't like this question, Mr. Commissioner.
I think we're running out of time.
That's okay. You can talk to me later about that, if you like, because I'm looking for ways that this commission will give you the $550,000 and feel good about it. But I, I agree with what they've all said because I, I see what our bills are. I sign, sign these checks. You should see what we pay per month to run this county. I'm looking over here at Carter and the peer who I have a huge, a great respect for. I'd really like to ask him to throw 250 into the, so we can make the full 550. But I know, I'm not asking you that, Mr. Manager, but I'd like to. So because it is a community effort, it's got, this thing has to be a whole community effort. It can't be a county effort. It can't be a city effort. It's got to be all of our people in the Trona County, period. Or it isn't going to get done, in my opinion. So I'm looking for something and thank you for the extra time, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird. So we are out of time and I'd like to keep with our agenda schedule. You know, we can't necessarily vote on and take action on anything right here today at this work session. I'm hearing some, some, I guess, some thumbs up or at least some indications of assent to you guys moving forward. Our county attorney will ask, what, what would be the next step? Would it be to take a vote at a regular meeting?
Chairman, I believe that would be the, the next step.
Okay.
To commit the money for that.
And so do we want to do that tonight or do we want to do it at a, at another time?
Would we want to have a MOU or, or something that we could see rather than just verbal? So that we can thumbs up and down on that or vote on it?
I, I think that if, if we have something in our packet, then it'll be a little bit cleaner. Would it be, I think you've done most of the work by drafting the letter to our, our former chairman, maybe dust that off and one of us can work with you and you, Lisa. And then we'll have it maybe at the next meeting. Does that sound acceptable? All right, is that clear?
Yes, sir.
Do we also need to have something drafted on the property as well?
So I, I think that we'll probably want to confer with not only you, but with the county attorney and, but I, I don't think that's the issue, but if written clarifications needed and it would probably be useful, then we can do that too.
It'll help with those as talking points.
Yes, it will.
Hey, thanks for coming in. Did you have any last words or are we good?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would tell you that this has been and continues to be a productive effort and I just appreciate the time and thanks for listening to us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all the library folks for coming in.
Mr. Manager.
I.
I'm not going to, I'm not asking for any money.
All right, we're going to move to the next item with Clerk Good and Danielle.
Green is on, oh, there you go. There we go. Good job.
Greetings.
Hello.
What do you got for us?
So we're here to discuss our dental benefits. We, the Executive Benefits Committee, that's who we are, the Executive Benefits Committee, meets monthly with our benefit brokers and we just recently met with them. We go over all of the billing and the charges and where we're standing. At budget season, we spoke with them about our dental insurance benefits and how we are behind the curve and we're not up to industry standard with our dental benefits. We asked them to look into it for us and they did. They came back and made a recommendation. Right now with our dental insurance, our employees have a maximum of $1,000 per year and the industry standard is $1,500. And right now the split is 50/50. So the dental insurance will pay 50%, the employee pays 50% up to that $1,000 maximum. Anything above the $1,000 is all out of pocket for the employee. So what the industry standard is, is 80/20 split, not 50/50 split. After looking at all of the numbers, they came back with an estimation of $48,000 is what it would cost to get us up to industry standard per year for our dental benefits. I guess I should, I don't know if you guys understand how our dental benefits work or what pod it comes out of. There's the Benefit Trust and so that's where all of the money comes from for our health insurance benefits. There is money in the trust. We are running ahead of the curve. We didn't have to do an increase in premiums for our employees this past year. We ran 7% above and right now we're still running about 4% above what we budgeted. So we have the money to do this and we want to enhance the dental benefits for our employees.
What she said.
You say, you say that so well, Tracy.
I think the Benefit Trust balance is well over 2.5 million right now.
So increase in the, in the amount paid. And say that one more time.
Yeah, so it would increase the maximum
Right.
from 1,000 to 1,500 and that's the industry standard. And then also the 50/50 split would be an 80/20 split.
Are there, are you looking at any additional benefits? Because I know there's a lot of stuff that's not paid for under our current plan, dentalize and I just didn't know if there was any, any increase in what would be covered with that 1,500 instead of 1,000.
So we did add, they looked into this, we did add sealants to the benefit plan that wasn't previously covered.
Say that one more time.
Sealants, sealants for your teeth, that wasn't previously covered under the plan. We did add those and then I'm trying to think what else we added.
But they also reviewed our plan and everything else fell in line with industries, industry standards other than this 80/20 or this 50/50 copay and the $1,500 max. We were right on target with almost everything else. Without adding extra, that would in fact be more of a cost to us. Of course, it doesn't cover orthodontia, which in order to do that would have been quite an increase in cost to the county.
I need you to help me with the math. So how many employees are covered by the dental plan roughly?
Over four, over about 450. It's included in the health insurance plan. So it's not an opt-in or opt-out. It's part of our health insurance plan.
So it's eye dental.
I'm not, okay, just bear with me for just a second. You said $48,000, right? Okay. But 400 employees, $500 increase plus the 80/20 increase of, is your, you know, 30% more. How are we getting to a $48,000 net increase? Because to me, it seems well over six figures.
So we went off of the benefit claims over the past 12 months?
So you're, you're saying this is what kind of historically it's been. We're not expecting 400 people to go fully utilize this.
No, last year we had 50 claimants, 50 out of the 400 that used our dental insurance plan.
And only, only 27 went over the, over the 1,500. So yeah, it's a very low number of participants that utilize it. And we feel part of the reason is because of the. And we feel part of the reason is because of the, the cost to them, that they're paying out of pocket.
Yep.
Questions, comments?
I have a question, but not about dental. So we didn't finish this conversation, and I do have a question for you guys. For your own way, if you would, please.
I, I never had a job that provided dental benefits until this one. So as an employer of employees where we had plans that didn't include dental, I'm thinking having any dental is, is nice. And maybe, maybe generous. But if we're talking about $48,000 or so, I don't have an objection to it. If that brings us in line and takes care of our employees better, you know, you know, then I'm, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I concur with that. I think that's something that you can't go to the dentist anymore without caution. I mean, everything has gone dramatically up. And I think this is a benefit to our employees that, that will help them out as far as the bottom line goes. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I never had dental insurance. And my wife got dental insurance, and I went in to get my teeth cleaned. And I didn't realize, you know, they used to clean my teeth for 20 bucks. Now it's several hundred. And so the insurance covered about 85% of that. I was, I was happy that day, Mr. Chairman, when I found out I wasn't going to have to pay the whole thing. And I'm like, everybody, I want to do what's right by our employees. And if the vote to pay for that dental insurance, I would give them a yes vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, I guess the one question I have is, go back to what you just said. You think that because of the way it sits now, people are probably not using the benefit. So if we do make this change, how many more people do you think are going to use it? What kind of an increase will that be then?
You know, if they're doing their preventative, that's going to save us money in the long run, because it's going to be $2, $300, not the $1,500 maximum that they're going to eventually get to if they're not doing their preventative.
Yeah.
And that's where the majority of, out of the 50 claimants last year, 27 of them had $1,500 plus. Were they doing their preventative? I don't know. But that's, once again, this would help people get in there to do the preventative so that the major doesn't come into play later, and then we're paying even more later up to the $1,500.
We're about out of time, but Commissioner Millen had something, I believe.
Just a quick comment. We're talking about employee retention. This is another way of trying to retain those employees or get Mike some help or whatever. It's the benefits. As part of benefits and whatnot, got a invoice here. There was a question about lifetime health and fitness. Can you explain that?
That's an employee-paid deduction. We just cut the check to the gym. So it's not, the county doesn't pay a portion of that at all.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. I, I think, I think you've got your thumbs up, ladies. So let us know if we need to do anything more formally than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle.
All right. We are at just a minute or two after five o'clock, so county legal.
Thank you. Lita has an update on an ISD, so I'll let her take over.
So if you all recall, I think however many meetings ago, the Hidden Valley Improvement and Service District was dissolved. And one of the concerns that we had was they had money in their account, and we'd never really, or I guess I have never really dealt with that. So good news. I received a day in the mail, not hate mail. I was a little concerned, I'm not going to lie, what I was receiving because of the frustration certain ISD homeowners had. But we did, they did close out their account as they're supposed to. And they did give that, give us that check for $1,116.97. And that's made out to the county treasurer. And then they did pay their publication fee as I had asked them. So we don't have to be concerned about, how do we recover? Do we recover for this amount? So I will give this check to Michelle. And then she can do whatever with it, and then I'll talk to someone in the treasurer's office tomorrow. So that the next question might be what you all want to do with this money. You all can, in fact, transfer it to a contiguous, I don't think that's the word. They use contiguous ISD. What's that word? An adjoining ISD, if you wanted. But if not, it just goes, we believe, into the general fund. That's something that we want to discuss further. The issue we will have is I've talked to Ms. Berger, and because this ISD is so old, there's not any current maps of it that she has to know necessarily who's adjoining.
So we have been asked by a lot of people that don't live on county-maintained roads for help from time to time. I don't believe we have a budget item for local assessment districts. You know, I'm, I don't know if we have the money, but we have some money. I, I just would ask the clerk just for her thought on whether we, and, and also you, Heather, Lita, what if we kind of started trying to, over time, build a, a fund where if we felt like on the, the pizza truck delivery, you know, in the hole from, you know, the wind halfway to China? If we're like, here you go, and then?
They finally found a truck.
Yeah, right. It dried out just in time for winter. And, and, you know, instead of Mike Hagler trying to grab it from somewhere in his budget. You know, so what are your thoughts on that? Because I don't know about a contiguous LED that, you know, we're like playing favorites or whatever.
Right. That would be, I think, difficult and maybe awkward to figure out which one and why they got it and why someone else didn't get it. And we're not talking billions of dollars. We're talking 1,000 bucks, which I know is a lot. But when it comes to who you're going to give it to and dividing it up possibly, that you don't end up with anything. So I know Ms. Duncan Malone had mentioned to me that however many years ago she was aware of a fund. Is that the fund you were speaking of?
So I, there used to be funds that the commissioner set aside for the formation of improvement service districts back when we were trying to encourage them, I think before we knew how problematic they could be. I don't know if that money is, if there is still money for that, but that was an idea potentially. If, if we had that, it could go there.
Is it too restrictive if we have a LED? I mean, that would work for our friends over in Allenville, apparently. I think can't, for one reason or another, one neighbor or another can put together a LED.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know. I'd have to ponder on it a little bit and probably talk to the treasurer's office too, to see what their thoughts would be. So I don't have an answer right now.
Mr. Chairman. Being the amount that it is, I, I don't know if it's, you know, like, 1,000 bucks is 1,000 bucks, and it's great, a dollar is a dollar. But being that for the special districts, the amounts that they would need or to, for setup or for our 25,000 for, for assistance or, or whatever, I don't, I don't think $1,000 is really, it's a drop in the bucket. I think it just needs to be dropped into the general fund and, and we move forward and go business as usual.
Chairman, I would agree with Commissioner Millen.
I would too, although I wanted to say something, I'd just soon put it in the library fund.
The only, the only other thing that I, that we could do is, is put it in Hagler's fund. Just because they're the ones, if, if somebody needs base course or anything else, they're the ones that are going to haul it, and it won't go very far, about two trucks and it's done. But, you know, if we are going to help somebody, he's, that's who, that's the department that's going to be doing it. So, I mean, just as an idea.
Mr. Chairman, we could always put in the general fund and do a transfer if we need to use it.
Yeah. I think general fund is the answer.
Thank you. Well, hopefully if we have any other ISDs with money, it goes that smoothly. Thank you.
I don't have any items that I personally have placed on the agenda for this evening, so I don't have anything to discuss there. I guess, or do you have any questions for me on anything that we, we haven't already talked about today?
I know Christie Turner was in here a little earlier, maybe she was the person to ask, but I didn't notice any of these public hearings being, looking like they were really contentious at the P and Z level. Did you get any sense of that, Heather?
So I think that we will probably have some comments on the, on the first item. Yeah. I, I don't believe the other items should, should be contentious. I think there are some folks that are going to speak in opposition to the, to the, the first item.
Is the zoning commission in opposition to it?
Pardon?
Yeah.
The zoning commission is in opposition to it?
No, no, the recommendation from the zoning commission, and as a reminder, this first item was the one we sent back for them to redo. They actually approved it or recommended approval of it.
So they've approved of everything we're seeing tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Heather?
Not by me, unless, unless, like I say, I can answer any questions.
All right. I just saw a note that our talented and capable administrative assistant gave me about potentially needing a liaison for Planning and Zoning Commission. And I neglected to bring that up. I thought it was a particularly good idea in that Ms. Turner is moving out and we don't have a development director at the present time. And it might, and we have some new faces on P and Z. And someone being the liaison for P and Z might assist with the transition to a new planning person. And I would hope that maybe somebody could volunteer.
I'll stick my neck out.
Okay. That's, that's great. Thank you. And I think you can watch some of those on YouTube or whatever if you need to. All right. I think that is it, unless there's more. Okay. So we will be in here at 5:30, I guess. Rejourned.